The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA 7 or Spectrum.
I'd like to call this special board meeting to order, start by taking roll call. Beth, if you could help with that?
Here.
Here.
Nacau.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Vanden Hoogel.
Here.
Shelton.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
All right, all seven board members are present. Just to provide a little bit of background before we get started, and then I'll hand it over to Superintendent Merely. But on Monday, August 3rd, the board approved the school district starting the year virtual. And at that time, we approved a metric that we felt like was the best that we had at the time, given the guidance from medical community, which was a 5% positive test rate. However, since then, Department of Health from the state of Wisconsin, along with other states around the country, have come out with models that take more into account and help school districts to make decisions using better data than just that one point. And so the purpose of this meeting today is to try to set that for our district. When it was very vague and didn't have any hard guidelines like we had seen in other states. And while they said that it was to help districts make local decisions, what essentially that has done is left seven board members, with the exception of one not having medical degrees, to make decisions around pandemic and the spread of COVID-19, and when we feel like it's safe for our district to reopen. But nevertheless, that's where we are. And so three things that we are going to try to accomplish here tonight as a board. The first, and Steve will go through a little bit about what we got from DHS, and talk about the Wisconsin model. From there, as a board, we need to make a decision and give guidance to Steve and his administrative team on if we would like to see reopening criteria that is K-12, meaning that it applies to every student in our district. Or if we would break it into different columns, is there an elementary plan, a middle school, high school plan, and how that looks? So we'll have to have just a discussion around that, so that Steve has clear direction. And then from there, once we decide what that plan looks like, we'll start to have, would we plug into that model? That would then trigger us to make certain decisions. So hopefully that that sets us up for what we need to accomplish. We'd just like to remind everyone, we want to try to keep our points concise. We want to get to the point, we know there's a lot of people watching this, who are interested in the outcome of tonight's meeting, and want to make sure that we handle that in an efficient way. So that being said, Superintendent Merely, I'll hand it over to you to kind of frame us up and get us started.
Sure, so you did a nice job setting the stage there. So one of the things, and I'm going to bring that deck up, just because I presume that there are some people in the community haven't seen it. There's a couple of points in there that I'd like to make sure that we connect on as we think forward. But the end result tonight, the goal is to have some gating criteria, whether that's K-12, or whether we segment our population at the elementary and the secondary level, or further within that with subsets, and then develop by where those thresholds are between the onsite, the blended, and the offsite model, so that our community is better able to understand when we'll make those transitions and what that will look like. As President Vanden Hoogel said, we were awaiting the direction from the state through the Department of Health Services. We'd been led to believe there were going to be three levels of support that they were going to provide. One was about schools and gating criteria, one was about participation in athletics, and one was about what happens when there's an outbreak. DHS did a wonderful job giving us a framework for how to handle an outbreak. That particular document is long and well thought out with a great deal of detail in there. Gives us a significant direction for what to do when a student or staff member tests positive directly in the district, in one of our facilities, or if there is an incidental transmission or exposure outside of the school setting. So very appreciative of them for that. Unfortunately, they did not provide the level of direction that we were seeking in terms of gating criteria moving forward. However, what we do have to work from with them right now is the draft of their initial proposal. So I think it gives us a framework within which to understand the state's intention with this. And then that gives us the opportunity to take a look at it and consider where those gating criteria might be. So I am going to, let's see if I can share the screen appropriately here. There we go, should be able to see my slide deck. So as I walk through here, and for those who are on YouTube watching that, I'm going to hit a couple of high points on some of the slides. You'll notice that I highlighted some of the text in red. I'm not going to go through all of that, but some that's of particular importance. I think it's good for us to reflect on the fact that one of the first things that DHS says is that these decisions are shaped by community values and priorities, by school resources, and the level of COVID transmission in your community. So they have recognized the local nature of this decision-making, and they do recognize that it reflects more than just simple numbers. And I think that's important for us to keep in consideration as we look through that. On this slide, that second bullet there talks about the fact that the most important risk factor for contracting the illness is therefore close physical contact in indoor settings. We know that, so that obviously is our schools. And I think that's one of the reasons that it heightens our attention to this. I'm sorry I went through real quick there, but just get to some of these high points here, so we have the opportunity to get to the conversation itself. This one, that first bullet, national experts have recommended that grades pre-K to 5 and in-person special ed services at grade levels, pre-K to 8 be given first priority for reopening. Disease activity level remains at the medium to low levels, and school resources allow for the adoption of physical distancing and other measures. So I think this is important for us to consider, and it's one of the reasons as we get down to the bottom of the chart here, you'll see that we've taken our initial conversation with you from last week, and we still have a K-12 option in there, but we also have an option that considers for us K-5 and 612. And for us, that's an operational split for things like transportation and our buildings. And so we've looked at that. We've also looked at our high-needs populations, and those would be students with disabilities, English learners, and some students in our at-promised populations when we look at bringing them back sooner, if we go to that type of split model. And one of the things, oops. So schools need to have plans to continue providing education and social support services during disruptions. I think one of the things that I just wanted to remind us, that we know that we could go both ways on this. And so we continue to work with our community-based organizations to both provide support in an offsite model, also looking at it in a blended model, and then even into the onsite model, and then recognizing that we may go back and forth. On this slide, recognition that the level of disease activity in the community needs to be a central factor in deciding between the different educational models. You'll recall, as Eric said, one of the reasons we initially used that 5% threshold was that was what we were receiving from our community health experts as a benchmark at that point in time. DHS recommends that schools consider physically-distanced learning or virtual learning models when the disease activity is medium or high, and consider in-person learning when disease activity is minimal. And so because of that, we then took their chart, and I'm going to show you some modifications on that in a moment. From a key standpoint, as we look at this, just to remind you that we refer to virtual as offsite, because we have some students that are receiving some in-person services. Physically-distanced for us is that blended model, and then in-person is what we consider onsite when kids are back in class. There are definitions for the learning models. Again, community transmission being high, either virtual learning or physically-distanced learning. Medium, again, virtual learning or physically-distanced learning, and then they talk about lows being in-person. I sent out the memo today, just a reminder on that. This is their data from August 19th. And you see that Brown County still remains high in both the case level, the burden level, and the activity level. Again, this is just the key for their particular matrix as they have it in there. Burden level and trajectory, if you're not familiar with those terms, burden level is the total number of cases for 100,000, and trajectory is whether it's growing, stable, or declining. So that brings us to that last slide. Again, we modified this from last week. And you'll notice on here that on the left-hand side in blue, this is the DHS matrix, and they carried with it no recommendations, other than what we saw in the previous slide, in the high, medium, and low for offsite, blended, or onsite. You can see on the right-hand side, this is simply a proposal to start the discussion. There's both a K-12 column, and then you'll see there's a column that shows a separation between K-5 and 612. And then down below there, you can see the asterisk. We're looking at some of our special populations, and if we were to go to a split model, we would consider bringing them back sooner. So what we are hoping the board is able to come to tonight is a determination of where those breakpoints are in that gating procedure. If you look at the information that's in the motions, that's in the board agenda, you'll notice that we have two motions in there as a starting point for the conversation. One is that K-12 motion, and that would be on the left side of the chart here. And then the other one is a motion that would carry for the right side of the chart. So you see it has an "and" in there, and both of those sets of gating criteria would then need to be included. If you were to split grade levels any further, then we would simply add a third block like that, so that it would give us that opportunity to create the gated gating criteria in between each of those three levels. So in short, that's where we're at. I will tell you that in a glimmer of hope that we might get something at some point in time to look towards. We do know that Brown County Public Health is looking into this issue, recognizing that there's an opportunity for them to provide some county-level assistance. They did share, however, that at the pace that they're moving, it's unlikely for them to give us any additional information or recommendations until after the school year has already begun. So I still think it's pertinent for us as a board and a community to have some gating criteria in place as we start the school year, but do recognize that we may at some point in the future, either from the county or the state, get additional guidance to help us inform our decisions about when to transition back and forth between the models. So with that, I'm done sharing from a presentation standpoint. I can certainly leave this chart up if it helps you to have it up. Otherwise, if you prefer to see each other, I might also stop sharing that so that we have the opportunity to visualize it. And sometimes it's tough when you can only see five faces on the right-hand side. So I guess, Eric, I'll defer to you, but I'm happy to bring it back up at some point in the conversation if we need to see it. But other than that, I'll stop sharing right now so that we can start the conversation and discussion.
Yeah, I mean, I'm also trying to think about the benefit for the people watching at home. I'm sure having this on the screen is helpful.
Maybe I'll leave it up for a little bit, and then when you're ready to, you can just signal to me, and I'll stop the sharing process.
Sure. So I'll try to do my best to call on board members as they raise their hands, but be patient with me as I flip back and forth to see all your faces. So I guess the next thing for us to do is to have a discussion specifically around, and again, this is meant to provide direction to our administrative team, and we can talk about what the different triggers are, but how is the board feeling about a K-12 model versus something else? K-5 and a 612, or you know, I've heard some other options as well, looking for feedback on that. Go ahead, Brenda.
So Brenda, I couldn't hear you.
I saw Brenda first, did you?
Okay, okay, that's good.
Then you can go next.
Thank you.
I am curious what your thoughts would be to considering. I know Dane County has split their elementary K-2, K through 2, and 3 through 5 with a higher case burden when the gating criteria, when the children could go back to school. And I know, I guess, you know, it's, I think, pretty clear, although not 100%, but that the spread rate for kids that are that young. And I guess I'm not, I'm not sure about second grade, but I'm under 4K through 1, coming back sooner. I think that, uh-oh, can you hear me? My internet's cutting, okay, my internet's back. That the spread rate seems to be lower in that age group. And so I'm wondering if that's something that would make sense to set as a third column in that chart.
I'd say that K-2 and 35 is a rational split point, because we often refer to those as either primary or intermediate elementary students. And so I think that whether it's academically or physically, we tend to cluster them in those groups. And so as we look at it really as a pre-K to 2 or a 3 to 5, I think that that would be a rational place if you wanted to split our K-5 population.
Brenda, if I could just react to that for the sake of conversation. And if I remember from our meeting last Monday, it seemed like everyone was interested in some kind of a split model. My overall preference would be to stay with a K-5, only for the fact that I just imagine families that maybe have a second grader and a fourth grader, and the disruption that that would cause if your second grader could go back to school, but your fourth grader couldn't. I understand your point on the spread rate, and I wouldn't vote down a plan that made a K-2 and a 35 split. But if you had to ask me for my personal preference, I would prefer to do it K-5. But again, I'm curious to hear what the other board members said. And a majority of people felt like a K-235 split was better. I would support it, but it wouldn't be my preference.
Can I respond, Eric?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so I feel like the scenario you laid out could happen no matter what we split. We could have a family that has a fifth and a sixth grader, and we're splitting them. And so I guess my reason for doing it is that feels that the four-year-old, a huge part of their curriculum is social learning, and it's hard to do social learning offsite. And looked at it from the standpoint of potentially relieving some burden on families. So if a family has a kindergartner, and a third grader, and a sixth grader, you know, a relative or a neighbor might be more able to be home with the older kids if the four-year-old or five-year-old is in school. So that was my reason for proposing it, is just to try to see if we can't get that age group back in person sooner.
Yep, that makes a ton of sense. And like I said, I'm not protesting against that model, and you make really good points. Go ahead, Brenda, sorry, here's my second page.
That's okay. So now I'm wondering, the conversation about, because I saw the same information that Brenda's referring to with K-2 split then 35. Are you, are you thinking, like, what's the data point between K-2 and 35? Like, what's the actual breaking point for that? Like, where, how close is that? Because when I look at, for instance, when I look at Minnesota's plan, right, they just have everyone essentially in secondary, and they have different case numbers per 10,000 people as far as when they split into blended versus offsite. Is there, are you thinking, Brenda, of the data point between the K-2 and the 35 is something pretty significant, or is it closer together? I guess I'm wondering about that to begin with.
Yeah, you know, as I look back and forth at these plans, the, if you look at the Dane County plan, the grades K through 2 says a 14-day average of 54 cases. So does that, that number is the same number and would fit in the moderately high range of numbers?
Could you, could you say that one more time? You did cut out. Could you say that one more time? I'm sorry.
So in the Dane County plan, they have a 14-day average of 54 cases, and sustaining that for four consecutive weeks. So I'm just asking if that 54 cases is the same number, fits in that moderately high range? Are those, is that apples to apples when you compare those two, those two together?
Can I actually ask a question of anyone that is interested in answering it? This is actually on the DHS website. It talks about the testing, that symptom onset data is more meaningful than using the data when the case was reported. It represents an illness occurred instead of when the person was tested, and the result reported is given to public health. They're just talking about, almost like there's a lag. I'm just interested in what people think about this, just to begin with, before we start throwing out case points of high, medium, low. Do we believe that that actually has an impact? And do we believe that that is something we should be considering when we're looking at numbers? Because I think it's an interesting point to consider.
Andrew, if you have a response, go ahead.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's interesting to consider and might, and might be ideal, but I think the reality is what you're going to, what you're going to be able to get off of the, where you have ready access to every day off of the state dashboard is just going to be each day's positive count. I don't think we would ever get close, and that's why it's always, it's always lagged so far back. And I think if we're, if we're looking at a couple of weeks' worth of data anyways, I think most of those effects should be, should be covered. But what, what I think we reliably get from the state every day that we can use, so we're apples to apples with everyone else, is that, is that positive case number per day. And Dane County is 54, 39, and 19 cases. You have to divide out for their population, but then multiply by 7, because it's per day. So for comparison's sake, it would work out to, I believe that their 54 would actually still be in DHS's high, because that would be 142 in two weeks. And the 39 would be on the borderline of the DHS high category, which would be at 103, depending on what you're putting as the Dane County population. And then the 19 cases per day average would work out to 50 per 100,000 per two weeks in that, in that county. For what it's worth, and when we get to the recommendations or a motion later, I do think that the DHS's, the DHS 10 per 100,000 total over, over two weeks, I think is a lower level than is necessary for a, for a safe return. And I also, I also think it's, I also think it's unattainable, and you have to get to that low case activity. It's, it would be stricter than any state or county plan that I've found. So I'm hoping that we can find some, some balance where we are not the most restrictive plan in the country, nor are we the most permissive plan in the country.
But Andrew, can you answer if you think that that lag is actually, do you believe that those results are preliminary? Or do you believe that there's something you could work with?
I don't think there's a good way to work with them. I guess if others at the district who have been looking at the data would say otherwise, that you've found something, I think really what you get every day is the positives. And sometimes that means you get something weird, like you might get a, you might get a negative 1 positive day on Monday usually, because they look back and the test got double counted or something. Mondays are the days that tend to show very little, very little activity on the 2 o'clock state report. But in fact, our one-week stats ticked up a little bit, because 10 tests did actually come back before, for today. For the last two weeks, zero positives came back on, two weeks ago, only two tests came back on Monday. So there's not a lot of testing. I'm sure there's more than two tests in the county, but it's probably the factor of the reporting.
And I concur with Andrew on that analysis. And I'd also say that one of the other things that we look at, that they show on the DHS website, is also the deaths in the state, and it's something that they report. So you tend to hear it on the news. That's also a lagging indicator. So for us, both of those are lagging indicators. Probably the thing that I put most stock in, when you look at those two lagging indicators, are the trend lines that you can pull off of those. And so for me, it's being able to look over time, whether it's two weeks, four weeks, six weeks, and really take a look at that and see if I can understand where the trend looks like it's going over that point, period of time. Because then, even though it's a lagging indicator, I've got a little bit more forward-looking idea about where it's going.
So just for the sake of process, and I understand Rhonda's point was it's hard to separate the two when we talk about number of columns and where the breakpoints are. Remember that we won't, we won't make a motion and lock ourselves into something until the very end. So I guess for the sake of conversation, I'm curious where board members are leaning right now in terms of the number of columns that we have. And we can always go back and change that when it comes to the final motion. But in order to keep the conversation going, I think it'd be helpful just to see where people are leaning right now. If it's one column, K-12, if it's a K-5612, or if it's K-235612. Go ahead, Laura. Oh, you're on mute. Every meeting, it's somebody different.
At this point, I'm leaning toward a K-12.
K-12, one column?
Yes.
Okay. So we've got one person leaning for one column, and one person leaning for three columns. Again, this isn't, doesn't have to be your final voter, where you stay permanently, but for the sake of moving things forward and working with a hypothetical. Just wondering if somebody has a scenario that we start with. Go ahead, Andrew.
I guess I'm interested, Lauren, in why you like the K-12, just because I haven't heard a lot of discussion about it? I'm just interested.
Well, some of the families that I've spoken to, they're not, they're not sure why what a child at a certain age would be treated necessarily differently. And when you look at the, I mean, you can't And, and when you look at the, I mean, you can't just look at the spread for small children versus older children. You also have to think of our staff and their susceptibility. And they're, they're in various age groups as well, but, but they're not, I mean, there are, my concern, a lot of it has to do with exposing our staff as well. So I'm, I'm more likely to say, start conservatively. And I also think that our, our community is, could, in a month, after some of these other schools have opened up and have seen, you know, what works and what doesn't, we could, it could, things could look much different in a month. This is kind of where I am at, um, as, at this point.
Laura, to, to, I've heard from some parents too, who struggle, and again, this is state language, not necessarily district language, although we've cited what they've said, is, you know, to say like, some students are our priority, and other students are not our priority. That can be a hard thing to hear, to hear that, you know, I'm not a party for the district, even though, you know, it's from a health and safety standpoint, and, and we're thinking about childcare and things of that nature. That's just something else that I've heard that, that's important to your idea.
Yeah, they, I mean, I've, I've heard that pushback of, why, why would my, my child be back in school when these other children are, are not? So, um, that's, that's kind of where I'm at, at the, at the moment.
I could just offer real quickly, I talked to, I, at the Big Five meeting last week, we had a couple of people on from Madison, and I, this was in the works there, we talked a little bit about it at the meeting. That very question came up, Laura, and Eric, about why, why split? And why the recommendation, I, to consider that? And the thought process behind it goes back to that very first bullet that was on the first slide, which is trying to balance the, the needs of the community versus the healthcare crisis that we have in front of us. We spend a lot of time at our meetings talking about how to make sure that we ensure adequate childcare access. And so it sounded to me, from the feedback that I got from the folks in Madison, that that was a heavy influence on what then came out of Dane County Public Health. Is there experience in the same kind of issues that we are in, the challenges for ensuring that they can, they can find adequate childcare for children, and it's harder to do that the younger the children are.
Dawn, go ahead.
So I'm kind of with you, Eric, where I guess if I'm looking, I would be looking at the two buckets. Everything I've read talks about the spread once kids reach 10, which seems to be a cutoff. And when we're thinking about childcare, I think anywhere from that K to 5. I mean, if that's, if that's one of our driving decision-makers, I said this at our last meeting, going blended doesn't solve the childcare issue. As, you know, somebody who worked full-time, both my husband and I, if you have two parents with full-time jobs blended, is still going to present challenges. So I don't necessarily think that should be the number one driving factor. But I, I get the need to bring our, the little ones back earlier, but I also think as simple as possible is important, so people understand what we're doing, when we're doing it, and why.
Andrew, I saw yours first, and then I'll go to Rhonda.
Yeah, I guess I'll just throw this out there, and this is probably, probably mostly for, for Steve, but if the, because maybe, maybe it doesn't make any sense. This is a late idea that I hadn't heard before. I wondered if there's potentially some merit and value if we're going to split, if we split at K6 instead of K5, and the reason being strictly because you would then give the middle schools a chance to, to open at just a half of a third capacity. Sixth grade is, you know, still closer to the elementary ages than the, than the high school ages. And just, just give you a little chance to see how things are going to look at the, the middle school. I don't, I don't think you, you know, throw ninth grade in the mix to that, and make it non-contiguous. But is there, I, I'm inclined to split into two levels, and I, I just thought I would see if there, if there was interest in, in doing a K6, just really for that reason.
Sure, we hadn't looked at it. I think that, that's definitely worth consideration. I think the one thing that Dawn shared is, is what we've been reading, which is, when they've done the epidemiological studies, they've looked at birth to nine and 10 to 19 as those, those age groups, where they've looked at the, the spread among the populations. I don't know what the breakdown is within, say, for instance, the 10 to 19 buckets. So I don't know if it's less widespread as you get closer to 10. I would presume that to be the case, but that's just an assumption on my part. So your 10, your 10-year-olds, your 11-year-olds, now you're stuck, start talking about your fifth and sixth graders. So they're right on the edge of that, that epidemiological transmission data that's out there. So we could certainly look at that. We haven't done any look into it. Partially, we were just looking at it from the standpoint of, of that coherence of the program, either the elementary or the secondary level. So we hadn't been looking at sixth graders.
Rhonda, did you have your hand up?
Oh, I do. So I have a few questions and some comments. When they, when you said the national experts recommend pre-K as the first priority, what, who are the national experts, and what are they, why are they recommending pre-K to 5 as the first priority versus the other groups? Just to get that out there.
Yep. So they've been talking about it from the standpoint of who is most readily able to take advantage of online learning in a virtual learning environment. And the older the students get, the better disposed they are to take advantage of it. Now, that's not a universal, obviously, we have students that either succeed or struggle at all age levels. But they'll tell you that the older a child gets, the, the more facility they have with working in the online environment. And the younger, conversely, they are, and the more of a struggle it is. And so I think they've looked at it from that standpoint. Our elementary children will have more difficulty in an online environment in general than our secondary kids will.
Okay, that makes sense. I think it was just good to get that out there.
Absolutely.
For the record. So another question I would have, especially if we're having to distinguish how many columns. I'm interested in, it was mentioned in the slideshow about school resources being, you know, the situation be contingent on school resources. What are the resources? What are the concerns? What's available when we look at, like, K5 on its own?
It's actually not different than when we look at 612. We're really looking at, at, you know, those five key areas. We're looking at facial coverings, we're looking at social distancing, we're looking at hand washing. We're talking about HVAC systems. So when you look at those, those, those apply to every building. So it's irrespective of grade level. Those are things that we would do universally across all of them. I, so when they look at that, I don't think they're distinguishing between those at K5 versus those at 612. And so for us, we're looking at it as it pertains to all children. So we're looking at those universally across all of our buildings.
Okay, so having heard all of that, I'm wondering about, with regards to K5 and bringing some kids into the buildings, what it might, if people could consider or even think about as this kind of, to some degree, a trial run, something that we're, we're kind of not diving into, or stepping into, all the things you just mentioned, the PPE, the hand washing, the HVAC, how this is all going to work. I personally would like to see something where you're at least, you're happy, you have some experience, staff has some experience with it. There, it's not like you're just, everyone's just back. And even if it's two days a week, maybe that would be something that would help comfort level of, of people involved. I'm not sure. I'm just trying to think along those lines. And especially if, if resources are maybe not an issue. I'm not sure if it's been discussed about having, if you had elementary students back, if you would maybe spread them out differently than if it was everyone? Is that something that's been discussed, using gymnasiums, cafeterias, whatnot?
So a couple of really good points there. First of all, one of the things that, that we are looking forward to in terms of making sure that we have all of our systems and practices dialed in, is that we will have some students that will start onsite as we come back to school. So we've already gone through and approved several programs at the, the middle school and the high school level, where we know we need to have some older children in. We also know we've got some students with disabilities and some English learners, again, K12, that we're looking at bringing in. So we're going to have the opportunity to make sure we have that done right as those kids come back to school. So that'll be our first step in the process. So I do think that's a really good point, Rhonda, in, in helping people who may not have kids in their classroom right away be able to look down the hall and look to their colleagues and their peers and understand how things are working. So we're hoping that that helps build some confidence and some credibility in that. And then as we look towards bringing kids back, one of the things that's going to be going out shortly to parents is a written communication on the cohorting process that we're going to use. So the parents know which cohort their child will be assigned to. And we're being very deliberate about that, so that we can do almost a 50-50 split of children in the district, regardless of which grade band we're looking at, with the idea that when those kids are in school, as they go through that initial process, that we will have lots of opportunity to keep them physically distanced, whether that's in their classrooms, when they're in there with their cohort, or when they're other, in other common areas of the building, so that we can ensure that adequate physical distancing in order to, to maintain enough space so that things are as safe as possible.
Steve, can I ask a question that's sort of a follow-up to that? So we asked families a few months ago that knew that they wanted to be all virtual to declare. Now that everybody's starting all virtual, if we were to hit a benchmark that said, we're now going to go to a blended, could families then re-declare at that time and say, no, I've tried virtual, it's working for my kid, we want to stay there? What will that process look like?
Yeah, and actually, we've said to parents that if their children choose to remain virtual for the year, that we've got the opportunity to support them in that, that model of learning. And so that way, parents will have that, that opportunity, as you said, as we hit these graded gating criteria, to let us know that it's not yet time for them to return their, their children to class, and they'll have that opportunity then to continue in that online environment.
Okay. So any other thoughts or feelings from people? We've sort of provided zero clarification in terms of how to go forward with two or three buckets. What are other people thinking? Again, don't have to, you know, write this in, in stone, but just to, to progress and give us a starting point, how are we feeling with number of buckets?
Can I finish the?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, yes.
No, that's okay, that's okay. So some of those things matter to me in order to determine that.
Yeah.
I guess that's why I needed to know, especially when it comes to resources, as well as the understanding that this would be a nice entree into blended or in-person in the first place. I think it's, it's important to know that that's, that's an understanding, and it sounds like it is. So that, for me, helps me feel confident in a K5 approach myself.
Okay. Christina, do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, no, I think the, the K5, 612 is probably the best bet.
Okay. Well, again, we'll get into, you know, media conversation now, but I think Steve, based upon where people are, are leading at this moment, a two-bucket approach, a K5 plan, and a 612 plan. Let's go forward with that for now and see how it shakes out with an asterix on an ability to change your mind if, if need be.
So I think the next point, again, if you're, you're looking at the deck, and I still have it up, and I'm, I'm happy to pull that down whenever we're ready, is really look at where those gating criteria fall. And so I just arbitrarily set numbers in there, the, the K12 on the left side. I just mirrored the, the color scheme, if you will, the DHS provided us, which is the high, medium, and low. You can see on the right-hand side where I looked at splitting into two groups, the K5 and the 612. Obviously significantly more aggressive with our K5 kids than with our 612 kids. But really, what we're looking for on that right-hand side, then if we're looking at the two buckets, is four breakpoints, two in each column, between light green and medium green, between medium green and dark green. And so it's when do we move from back and forth between offsite or blended? And then when do we move back and forth between blended and onsite?
Steve, I have a question for you on the, the transferring back and forth, whether it be, you know, one way or the other. Just curious about what your vision is for that process. Is it where we're going to set a benchmark here tonight, and then that gives you direction? And then, as you're watching the numbers, we go? Or would that come back to the board and to say, hey, here's what I see, do you guys still want to follow through with this? Do we vote on that? And then the follow-up to that would be, what kind of a time or a notice would we give to our staff? I've heard from, from staff that have said, you know, if you have a board meeting on Monday that says, hey, kids are going to show up Tuesday morning, that's going to be a problem. So just wondering about what that's going to look like from a, a flow and transition, whether it be to go from virtual to blended, or blended to onsite, or the other way.
I think we'd model something like they've done in Dane County. So in Dane County, they've got a, a period of time there where they're expecting that that average holds. And then after they've reached that point, that's where they, they trigger the gate to go to the next level. So from that standpoint, I think, once, once the board's determined where their gating processes are on here, then we would bring you back a profile that would allow you, then as a board, to take a vote on that, which would actually be those procedures that we would use to go back and forth. It wouldn't require a board vote. I think there's some benefit to that in the sense that if it happens, say, between board meetings, over holidays, things like that, we're not stuck waiting to take action. But keep in mind, it's not going to be that Monday to Tuesday type of thing that, that the person expressed concern with. Because if we're looking at something like that four-week running average that Dane County Health was proposing, anything like that would give us a good runway, so that you would see where numbers were at, you would be able to see it coming. This wouldn't be a surprise to anybody, because they'd be able to see where those trajectories at. You know, as Andrew has said, and then we've heard from lots of people in the community, people know where to get this data, they can go on DHS, they can find it. It's one of the things I think is a plus to this process, because it makes it very transparent. Everybody can track this data in real time. People will be able to truly, truly see it coming, and they'll know when we're going to get to that point. And so then we'll be able to say, okay, when we've reached that point, then, you know, here are the next things that will happen. We'll lay out all the steps for you in that process. And that's whether it goes one direction or the other, as long as we know where that breakpoint is. You asked before, when are we going to need to reach out to parents and ask them to tell us whether they're sending their children back or whether they're keeping them at home? And so we'd set all those timelines up in there, so that you could see how that process would unfold. And, and then again, everyone in the community knows exactly what happens when.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, go ahead, Rhonda.
Are we looking at, when you're, you're taking the numbers and you're, you're looking at breakpoints, are we going to be also not just looking at cases, but are we also going to be looking at hospital capacity?
That's a really good question. I know when you look at the Harvard Protocol, that's one of the things that they talk about is, can your local healthcare system handle an increase in incidence? Because you may actually be, you may have low test rates, but you may have a high hospitalization rate, which means there are very few beds that are left out there. That has not been one of the metrics right now in terms of a formula. It is one of those things that they have used to take into consideration, and we frequently receive reports on that. But that hasn't been in a formula, at least none that I've seen so far, in terms of schools. It's been in there in terms of communities, when the community is looking to decide whether or not they should adopt stricter measures. But it hasn't been applied to schools that I know of. adopt stricter measures, but it hasn't been applied to schools that I know of.
Okay. With, again, going back to the Minnesota plan, they're looking at cases per ten thousand, correct?
Yes.
Is there a reason why we would not do that?
I think one of the reasons in particular, say, another plan now, so if you look at Oregon, Oregon's broke it down by high density counties and low density counties. And in the higher density counties, they recommend the per one hundred thousand number, and the lower density counties, they're recommending the per ten thousand number. Minnesota didn't break it down like that, and and I'm sure many of you know the the kind of population distribution that Minnesota has, not unlike Wisconsin. A few large metropolitan centers in a lot of rural areas. My presumption is, without knowing anymore, that perhaps Minnesota looked at that ten thousand metric because of the number of small rural counties that they have. But I know that some of the initial data analysis I've seen says that larger cities or metropolitan statistical areas, MSAs, should be using the per one hundred thousand number due to the size of the population that they had.
Okay, do we, I do not have this, do we have it figured? Maybe Andrew does with regards to the Minnesota plan of what it would look like for one hundred thousand with their approach? Andrew, do you have anything with that?
Go ahead, Andrew.
Yeah, she does. You just multiply it by by ten. So the Minnesota plan would start elementary back hybrid, you could do below five hundred cases in two weeks, you could bring back the rest of the kids hybrid below three hundred, and then you could bring back elementary, could come back full time below two hundred, and everyone could come back full time below a hundred. And and the, now, I think that in in my opinion, I think the the Minnesota criteria is a bit loose. I would be concerned about, I mean, four, five hundred is about where we were at our worst peak in Brown County in in April, and I would be uncomfortable. I mean, I certainly would have wanted schools closed, you know, then for sure, knowing what we know now. The Oregon plan is the strictest in the county. I applied their data to our numbers, and we would have had zero days of any hybrid or anything under the Oregon plan, and we would have had been open. Some kids would have been in the buildings every day under the Minnesota plan, so I think we should be a bit stricter than Minnesota, and I'm working in my headset charge, that's why I have my my mic might not be great right now, but it should be good again in a few minutes. But I think Minnesota, Minnesota is surprisingly I was, in my opinion, surprisingly permissive. But yeah, that's, you just multiply it by by ten.
Andrew, if I could ask you a follow up question. One of the things that you had talked about last week is, you know, putting together a plan that is unattainable. And, you know, I certainly am very curious, as Laura mentioned earlier, about what happens in other districts and what we can learn and read and respond to. But I also don't want to put together a plan that's impossible and means that schools will be virtual for five years because we've approved this plan. So given what Steve has on the screen now, again, which is just a starting point, what is, I'm just curious about what your reaction is to that against your comment last time about not having a plan that's unattainable.
Well, if we're talking about full onsite for everybody, that doesn't happen until you get to what the state considers the lowest activity burden. And you can't get to that until you get that number down to to ten every two weeks. I've found no jurisdiction that is that strict in the country. The strictest one is probably is probably Oregon, and that is that's ten per week, so that would still be double Wisconsin's low. Like, I don't, I know, I I think a couple of weeks, maybe some of the tiniest counties briefly touched low because no one, no one caught it for a week, but even, you know, the tiny counties, a couple of people catch you in a week will will bump you up to medium. So I don't, I I think that and Brendan and I were talking about this over the the weekend, I'm going to say, when I say we will never hit ten, I I stand by that, but I will stop short of saying impossible, because I think if people, if everyone did what they needed to do to reduce community spread, I mean, you know, New York City eventually got got below that, but I just don't see us I don't see us ever getting to that low case activity burden, so that I guess I would call that, I think it's unattainable. I think if we were to set these standards, and I understand why you picked you picked something as a starter with what state levels were, but I just, yeah, I think that's, that's unattainable. So I I mean, when if we're, whenever you're ready, I I kind of took input in conversations I had and and came up with came up with a motion, if people are interested in seeing it, that I think maybe finds some middle ground that might be able to be supported by the board.
Okay, why don't we just hold off, see if there's anybody else that reacts to what's in front of us, and then we'll go from there. Don, why don't you go ahead?
So Steve, I just want to make sure I understand, when we talk about full onsite, we can't meet CDC guidelines around social distancing if we have all our students in our schools. Is that correct?
That's correct. We'll have to make some compromises if we have all children onsite.
Okay, I just, I think it's important when we look at the numbers to understand that in order for us to bring everybody onsite, we will be our decision is we are going to do that, knowing that we will not be able to meet CDC guidelines around social distancing.
Can I ask for clarification?
Yeah, go ahead.
From Dawn. So when you say when we bring everyone onsite, are you saying, are you referring to everyone as in all students? Or all students K through five?
I'm talking about the onsite, not the blended. So if you're looking at the graph when we talk about the full onsite, not the blended.
So then you're referring to all students, not just K through five?
Yes.
Anytime we get into that dark green band at the bottom, so probably the easiest visual for you is think having two thousand kids in front of you, right? So we're going to struggle to make sure that we keep them physically distanced in the hallway passing between classes. Regardless of how creative we are, we're going to struggle with all those kids on campus, trying to make sure that we feed them in a socially, physically distanced manner. So we're, we know when we get to the onsite model, just given the physical capacity of the district, we'll have to make some compromises on on distance between children, both in classrooms and in things like passing times at the high school.
But to reiterate, blended, we we could meet.
Right, that that's, yes, Ron, that's a great distinction. Thank you for making that. When we're in the blended one with half capacity, then that gives us that ability to do the the appropriate physical distancing.
Steve, does that apply to busing too? So I know when we talked about full onsite, we can't meet CDC guidelines around busing, but in the blended model, are we able to do, I believe it was every other seat on the bus, are we able to do that with blended?
We will be much closer because of the way that bus seats are constructed, if you think about six feet. We may be a little less than six feet, but we certainly won't be in the in the every seat model, so every other seat's going to get us close to that that physically distanced on the bus.
Thank you.
Any other reactions to the plan that's right in front of us before we let Andrew? Oh, sorry.
Nope. There is discussion out there about testing capacity, and I've brought it up before. And there were some, there were people that shared an article or two with me about what the Health Services Secretary Andrea Palm has said in regards to testing capacity. I mean, the headline basically says, the state lacks ideal coronavirus testing capacity for reopening of college campuses and schools. But then, as you get into the article, they basically, they commit to having, they said they've been able to handle outbreaks, and they're going to prioritize the testing for public health and others on the ground locally. When we see them, we certainly will want to do that in the context context of school. Because there has been conversation about testing capacity and what that looks like and how what that does to the numbers. And I have, I had also talked with county Health Services Director today, and it's my understanding that there are definitely, there are tests available, that there there are tests coming in. So it's just to make sure if anyone's concerned about that at this time, it seems like the testing capacity, they're committed to it, and it seems to be there right now. There seems to be almost more tests than necessary to even utilize right now in the county, from what I've been hearing. So I think that's an important thing to just touch on, bring up and and note.
And one of the things I'd offer on that one is that they've been sharing with us that the testing processes continue to evolve, that they're they're hopeful that in the not too distant future, they're able, they're going to be able to introduce some new protocols for testing, and hopefully will speed up the response time, because that's the biggest concern right now that we're hearing when we talk to the the public health professionals is, there's such a lag in some cases between when tests are done and when they come back, that sometimes the data is, if you will, too late because that person who's been infected has been in proximity with others and is is spreading the virus before they even know that they have it. So we're hopeful for that more rapid turnaround.
All right, so we've got this in front of us, sort of first blush, again, off of DHS and Dane County. Andrew has has put a significant amount of time, I appreciate it very much, into his own data analysis. And Andrew, I'd be curious to hear sort of a different vision based upon what you've looked at. So if you want to discuss that now, I'd be, I'd be interested in hearing it.
Okay, thank you. So first I have to say, well, well, you can imagine there might be many times that there would be something involving some weird, complex spreadsheet analysis that I would just be, you know, chomping at the bit to be the writer of the first draft of a of a motion. There's no there's nothing, there's nothing great or or exciting or or fun about about this because it's, it represents weighing very very real, very real problems. Right? The problems of if we don't open and the problems of if we open too much, too much too soon. So I think that positive I think that positive testing percentage really, really can get much too jumpy, although I think there might be a a case, which I mentioned in the motion, where it could be such a such a high value of positivity over fifteen percent, I think should trigger a a discussion, because that might be a warning flag that we're under, that we're under testing. But even even if you look at the one week positivity positive test number today, nah, not today, two days ago, because nine days ago, we lost a day where eleven hundred tests came through. Right? So those come off, and you have a bunch of positive tests. So I think case activity, case activity burden rate for Brown County is is what's best to use. It's it's easiest to, it's easiest to follow. It's not driven by how many negative tests there are. So my suggestion, and I can share my screen so everyone can look at it. Should I do that?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
Josh, we need to give you permission.
It should be all set.
Okay, how do I pick? I want to make sure I'm sharing the right screen, so where do I go?
When you click on share screen, it should show you all of your pages that are up, and it should have the monitor numbers in there.
Yeah, I just don't know, yeah, I just don't know, oh, here we go, okay. Okay, so this would be, this is, this is what I came up with, and for what it's worth, it is it is more permissive than Dane County. And it is much more restrictive than models like Harvard Global Health. And it is much more restrictive than the state of Minnesota, but it is somewhat more permissive than Dane County, and it is it is much more permissive than Oregon, which I think is probably the strictest state, it's the strictest state I have been able to find as far as as far as their metrics. So my suggestion would be that for for K-five, we would look at trying blended when we reached one hundred per hundred thousand population for two consecutive weeks. And then we would try full elementary onsite when we got that down to sixty for two consecutive weeks. That we would try six twelve at eighty per hundred thousand per week for two consecutive, and blended to onsite at forty per hundred thousand population for two consecutive weeks. The trajectory rate is is very hard to hit, but if you hit it, it suggests that something something major is going on. So I added, I would add that a significant positive trajectory rate between the two most recent weeks, or a one week positive test rate over fifteen percent in Brown County will trigger an emergency board meeting to determine if an exception is is necessary. Though I think it's not likely you would be dropping below a hundred for the second week in a row. It would be very, very hard for that to happen at the same time that the case trajectory was positive, but I didn't want to completely rule it out in case there's a last minute, really bad, really bad sign.
Andrew, my first reaction is, how different is this than what we saw on the previous page? How does it shift those those triggers compared to the other one?
Yep, so I mean, there's no, I'm not hiding anything about the fact that I think the state is, makes it impossible. I mean, the state, the if if we assume that since the case trajectory rate is something that is is rarely hit unless you're rising or falling really fast, I mean, the the state has, the the state's high is, the state's high is fifty would be fifty per week because you cut it in half, if you're looking at per week. The state's high would be fifty per week, the state's moderate is, would be twenty five, it would be fifty, twenty five, and fifty, twenty five, and and five then. So yeah, if you, if if you're a, if you're a believer in the state, in the in, although the state of Wisconsin didn't really tie that to schools either. I guess if you look at the state of Minnesota, though, they would have five hundred here. 3, 300 instead of 80 here. Actually, you'd have to cut them in half too because they're per two weeks. 250, Minnesota would be 250 to start bringing kids back in per week. Dane County is Dane County, if you look at it per week, I believe is about 75, 50 and 25. So Dane County is higher than the state, too.
This is taking those numbers from the state and bumping them up by
Andrew, if I just jump in, Andrew, I think I have this right. So correct me if I'm wrong here, but I think the state so if you're looking back at the, the chart that had case activity burdens, that middle column in the state's analysis piece and the categories were high, moderately high, moderate and low. And their burden rate, so they have four levels in their burden rate. And the high level is case rates, case rates greater than 100 per 100,000. So that's very similar to what Andrew has on the screen right here. Their moderately high is 50 to 100. Their moderate is 10 to 50. And then that low was under 10. So I think if I'm, if I'm reading yours correctly, Andrew, yours at the top end looks fairly similar to DHS and you simply bring that bottom end up to perhaps a more attainable level to get, to get back to onsite. Am I reading that right?
Well, unless I'm misunderstanding the state though, I think the state is a two-week total.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. The state is a two-week total.
So this is, this is quite a bit higher than that, but even Dane County is higher than the state, too. So I guess the state, if you looked at per week, and that's why I thought it probably should be hit two weeks in a row though. So yeah, so the, the state of Wisconsin, if you split it out into a, into a per week would be 50 and up, 25 to 50. 5 to 25 and the low, the low would be 0 to 5. And again, Dane, you know, but that's honestly, I don't, I don't think though, the state's high, medium and low are are reasonable for most communities with, with schools, nor did the, unless unless something new has come out, the state didn't make those for schools either. They, they came up with, here's a high, a medium and a low. And a moderately high. So I guess I would also say that Harvard, you know, Harvard Global Health, which is a I, I would argue takes a health-first perspective versus an economic factors-first kind of perspective. Their definition of, of, of high, where you could start bringing people in is 175 per week to bring in, to start bringing in kids and 70 to start looking at, at possibly full onsite options. So the, I don't, it's, it's unfortunate that from you know, the state of Oregon to the state of Minnesota to the state of Wisconsin to Harvard Global Health to the state of Connecticut, that they, they vary widely. That's, one would think that we'd be a little bit more on the same page and I'm surprised that I'm surprised that Harvard Global Health is so permissive as they are, but this is yeah. So anyways, that's and I would, I would consider that maybe we would look at granted, you would know if two, if your two weeks ago was not met, you would already know that, but maybe picking a day, perhaps Wednesday would be the day that if you calculated the stat on Wednesday, would that be enough information to decide for Monday? Or should it be the longer gap? The longer gap you put in, the more time there could be for things to change, but also it's the more time for people to plan what's coming next, although I think once we pick what day of the week, we would end our, you know, we would have our cut on, we should probably stick with it.
Go ahead, Rhonda. Oh, sorry, Andrew.
Our, our, our best day since coronavirus, except for the days when we weren't really testing for it. Once the, once the pandemic hit Brown County, our best our best week we, our best week would have been in about the twenties. And our worst week would be at, our worst one week would be at 262 and today we're at 174. So this is not Eric, you and I talked about that a little bit. Whether or not we would be looking at a metric that says the way things right now in Brown County are okay. I would agree that it's, it's not okay and we would have, we're at 174. So we would have to get down to be talking seriously about going going to blended.
For the record, Andrew, I have a spreadsheet that looks just like that that I've been keeping as well.
Okay. Cool.
I'm kidding. I don't, I appreciate that though. Rhonda, did you have?
My question was going to be where we were today.
Oh, okay. Any reactions to what Andrew has presented here? Brenda, I think you're on mute.
I'm looking at the COVID report that Steve sent us this morning. And Steve, did you just lift the charts off DHS's website for that, for those?
So what we have, I think you're, are you looking at the, the conditionally formatted, the, the heat maps on there?
Well, what I'm looking at is on page, oh, it's no page. It's, it's page three, I think. The one that says Brown County test results.
Right. So what you're, what you're seeing there is the 14-day positive test, test rate per 10,000. So, and that would be commensurate with what Andrew was just talking about when he, he did it per 100,000. So that's why you see the difference in those numbers there. So that, because he's looking Andrew, I think you were looking at a seven-day average for 10, 100 or 10,000, or I'm sorry, 100,000. We were looking at this number is a 14-day average per 10,000.
So it would be half of that to match, trying to match it to Andrew's numbers. And I, I think it would be this is my preference because I've been going back and forth to all sorts of different data and things like that. I think it's important to have everything matched so that we're so and that's why I asked if this chart from Brown County was, was lifted off of Brown County's site because I'm wondering if you know, if that's what's available to the general public on a daily basis, can we match our numbers in, in the gating criteria?
Yep. That's a good question. Unfortunately, I can tell you that, that this data is available, but it, this it's not readily available. You have to dig to get it. And I, the team on our end has worked really hard to make sure that they have access to this, but you can find it, but it's in a raw data format. So it's not, it's not compiled. So our team actually compiles this every day.
Okay. Can they compile it then based, at least based on 100,000 residents? So it matches the per 100,000
that we're using to talk about?
Yep. Yeah, we could definitely do that. We could do it on a per 100,000 instead of per 10,000.
Yeah, because I just, like I said, I, I know when you bounce back and forth, it's really easy to get lost in because the average rate per day, you know, an 14-day average per day number, then there's the seven-day average, the two-week average, the per 100,000, per 10,000. I think just making it as simple and clear as we can on that. And then when we have reports that the numbers on the report are consistent with what's in that chart. And so either way, if it's easier to keep the way and change the numbers on, that Andrew has listed based on this chart.
We, we would change our, our, our data reports to match the board motion.
Okay.
And, and one of the things that Andrew pointed this out already, but you know, it's interesting because in the Harvard information, they give it to you on a daily basis instead of a weekly or a bi-weekly basis. So unfortunately, everyone seems to have a different measure for this.
So it, yeah, you have to go out into the country to see what the rates are. And yeah, everybody's reporting it differently.
So again, we're, we're kind of at a point now where we've got two different things in front of us. You know, what we have from DHS is sort of what Steve presented and again, it's just sort of first crack. And then Andrew has done a little bit more analysis and seemed to have compared that to other places. So looking to just continue moving this forward to see where people are feeling in terms of their comfort level as we try to approach making a motion here. Go ahead, Rhonda.
So are we looking at this in regards to K5? Have we determined if we're looking at it that way right now or are we?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that we're right now through the lens of K5 unless, you know, something triggered where most of us were, were feeling differently, but
Okay.
A moment ago, people were feeling like a K5 and that's the way that Andrew has this motion written, I believe.
K5 on the top, K612, 612 on the bottom.
Okay. Sorry. Now I see it.
Yeah, no, that's all right.
And chances are if we, if we got our if we got the virus under control a little better, you might, you might hit these relative, you know, these might come relatively quickly. If you look at how steeply it declined last time, although then again, it declined last time with maybe more stringent measures than are happening now. So
I have another question.
Go ahead, Rhonda and Brenda.
Are we going to, are we going to look at like, for instance, the, the prison numbers that were pretty significant recently? Will we take into account any sort of massive outbreak in a facility like that when we, and are we going to, like, do we believe that actually would impact schools or not? And do we believe that those numbers should be factored into the totals?
Our problem is, and I'm sure Andrew's seeing this too, we get our data from the state, the state aggregates everything and I, I'm unaware of the state factoring out anything, whether it's a manufacturing facility, a prison, a nursing home. And I think part of their rationale is that people who work in those facilities are that traveling in the community, but that's just presumption on my part to, my knowledge, they don't factor any locations out in terms of taking data out of those sites.
Okay. So we wouldn't necessarily, it maybe could be a discussion, discussion point at some time potentially if it was significant. Because I, I just sometimes I see it's possible that those numbers could actually make or break within a couple of days of what we would do, one way or the other.
And the longer the, the data set that you take into account, the less those individual surges have because it's smoothing them out. And I think that's one of the reasons I see a lot of them with the which Andrew has on here, you know, the two consecutive weeks. If you're doing the rolling 14-day average, it should smooth some of those out because most of those prisoners all got tested within a very short period of time. So then a day or two later, you shouldn't see those in there. So hopefully the weight of the average smoothes out either a dip over the weekend or a bump in the prison population.
Okay.
Brenda?
The prison testing, the as, as luck would have it, the the prison has its own census tract. So right now as of today, there's since whenever they, I mean, well, they've had some tests from the beginning, but the running total so far in the prison appears to be 201 positive, 795 negative, which means probably probably all residents there have been tested, which is another thing. They're probably going to get tested again. So in a couple of weeks, that would be a huge and why, part of why I'm glad to be kind of off of the positivity number is the prison might get tested again and no one will have it anymore. And then we would have, you know, we might have 800 more negative tests thrown into the, the pool, but the I guess that will be long worked out of the average before we would be starting school anyways. So
Brenda, did you have something to share?
I just, I'm looking at your chart, Andrew, and you have offsite to blended and then the next line says blended to offsite and you have values the same?
Well, offsite to blended would be because you were over it for two weeks and I would assume blended back to offsite would be you would have to go to offs, I mean, if you're over 100 if you're over 100 per 100K population for two consecutive weeks, if you're over it, you would go back to offsite and you would offsite to blended, right?
Yeah, that's, that's what I thought you meant, but I'm wondering if I'm just going to make that clear. Offsite to blended is less than 100, blended to offsite is greater than 100?
Yep.
Just make it clear to everybody.
Yeah. And then blended to onsite would be under 60 and blended would be over 60.
Right. Over 60, yeah.
Well, Andrew's making that change. Christina, did you have a comment earlier? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I would just say generally, Andrew, thanks for putting this together. I feel really comfortable with this. And I think it's important for us all to remember that it we can change this as information comes forward and as information is updated, right? Like, not that we want to be changing this weekly, but I just think that that's really important, that we do have to make a decision. But that doesn't mean that that's the decision forever.
Yeah. That's a really good point, Christina. I've been thinking that too, that two weeks ago or three weeks ago, we thought 5% was the best we could do. And here we are, three weeks later with a, a much better data set and much better metrics and more guidance from states. And, you know, so this is what we know as we sit here on, you know, August 24th. And we might know something better. And again, we want our community to, to know that we're trying to be consistent and trying to have guidelines, but if, if there's some new epiphany in terms of how we do this, when we know better, we'll do better.
Right.
Maybe if I can, if I just jump in and offer that I do know that, like I said, we, we have word that county health is working on something that much like Dane County is doing and actually Winnebago and, and Alagame are also doing some things. So I think that in the absence of any kind of directive from the state, which I think most county health departments were really waiting for, they've now stepped up their own game and they're looking to provide guidance to everyone within their county, public schools, private schools, et cetera. So that we've got a little bit better idea of what to do. So one thing that we might want to do is, is, as Andrew's getting this done is you know, if there's a board, you take some action, move forward to this, that'll give us an opportunity to get this to county health and have them take a look at it and give us any feedback based on the modeling that they're developing. So Christina, to your point, if they make any recommendations for us to reconsider, we can all give remarks back to you, too.
That's so funny, Steve. I was just going to say that that would be my next recommendation. So that sounds, that sounds great. Thanks for that.
And Andrew, is there a reason you picked
lengths of time? Because I'm looking at the Dane County plan and they've, they've said they reached that Because I'm looking at the Dane County plan and they've they've said they reached that target. Or the target is sustained for four consecutive weeks. And I I'm just curious what your thought was. Especially considering that that there's a lag sometimes between the the testing and the case numbers. And the positive tests and the actual case numbers.
Yeah, basically, it's just that most places I saw that did a that did a burden number, we're just looking at a two week total. Or even we're looking at some were even doing it off of off of one week totals. Arizona looks at one week totals and somewhat surprisingly, if it's no matter how high it is, if it declined twice in a row, you're good to go back to blended, which is a little scary because if you go from five to five to four to three and be good to go, that was a although chances are if you went from five to four to three, you're you're really plummeting down, but you could go from five to four ninety to four eighty and, you know, and be fine. So, you know, two, it seemed like most most of yeah, it's it's basically based on the fact that I think yeah, I think a lot of lot of the metrics are looking at fourteen consecutive days. Chances are if you've, I guess, if you've tested positive and two weeks of two weeks have gone by, you're you're probably in the clear. I guess also one more thing about it is if if we were to have that number be three or four, we might be unnecessarily hamstrung by a positive test from four weeks ago that the person is clearly is not infectious or or spreading anymore. So it would seem, I don't know what we're what we're gaining in safety by looking at a case that certainly would be resolved by by now. That's why I was more worried about the two the two recent weeks.
All right. Any other comments about this? Go ahead, Laura.
Andrew, you've clearly done a very deep dive on this. For those of us who did not do this sort of analysis of data. You know, I I I'm not sure how you how, you know. I'm not sure that if you explain to me in detail how you got to this, I would even be able to fully understand because you've done such this amazing deep dive. So is it possible for you to share share? It's because it feels like we're heading in this direction. To share with Steve and his team and the whatever people might need to have a look at your analysis in your your data and how you got to this. Is it possible for you to share that so that they can have a look at it?
Absolutely, yep.
Because I feel like the more, because they've been working on this stuff for a long time. And I I would just feel more comfortable if it felt more like a team, a team approach on this and that more eyes had looked at it.
Yep, but you know, I am, and I I know that I, you know, I'm somewhere, you know, on the spectrum of, I I know there are some people who are more would be more restrictive about about opening than than this. And, you know, I think everyone has done their own investigation and I'll certainly share the whole spreadsheet with the board. But this isn't going to make people feel any better, but I'll just show you what happens if you apply other states' plans to our data since COVID started. Just
Before you start, Andrew.
What's that?
Before you start that, what what is our number today?
One seventy one, one one seventy four, one seventy one.
Okay, that's our averaged.
That's our most recent week's average. And the week before that.
So if I'm again back to that you're on here, back to that Brown County test result. And that I see as of yesterday, the running fourteen day average was twenty six. So and it's per ten thousand, so that's two hundred and sixty seven per a hundred thousand divided by two because it's fourteen days instead of a week.
So, yeah.
I get a hundred and thirty three when I do that.
I think you have to. Are you you're looking at, so I never look at the I never look at the county page. I think the county, the county that are you talking about their daily infographic that they do?
No, I'm looking at what what Steve said this morning. Of an update for for this morning.
Let me just pull it up. I'm sure.
It's on the third page.
When? Oh, sorry, yep. The eight twenty four COVID update from from Steve on the third page.
Yeah, because Brown County test results on the top. The running fourteen day average and it's total number of cases per ten thousand.
Per, so that'll be.
So that'd be two hundred and sixty seven for yesterday. If I'm reading this right.
So if I go, if I count back fourteen days of positives, I get if if I'm not separating the weeks, so seven hundred five positives.
Okay.
Divided by two point five nine. So twenty seven point two, but that's within, it depends what exact precise number you're dividing by for county population. So, yeah, that would be the the fourteen day total. And then if you look at the if you look at the week most recent, not counting today, which doesn't change things much anyways. For our most recent week. That would be yeah, it looks like about be a twenty 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 seven seems about right. So it would be about it would be about thirteen point five or one thirty five for the two weeks, but the most recent week is is was not good.
Oh, okay. So that's what you're giving?
Yep.
Okay, so again, if we're yeah, if our number is per week, then this report should be per week too, so that it's right, Steve? Do you know, do you see what I'm saying?
I'm actually trying to follow along right now. Sorry, I was working on some numbers on this end.
Okay, um, so, well, let's see, did I write this down? Let's see. So Andrew's is Andrew, was your chart, your chart is per week, right? High is fifty, fifty per week?
The state would have, the state would have fifty per hundred thousand per week would be high.
Oh, sorry, yeah, I'm looking, yeah, I'm looking at the wrong place. Okay, so yours is less than a hundred.
Then we get elementary blended, yep. So if you had.
But if we're looking at this Brown County, this chart on page three of Steve's report, that's a running fourteen day average as opposed to a per week average.
Right, so you would need two weeks of ten on here would be the same thing as two weeks of of a hundred in in the the motion that I presented. So approximately approximately twenty, except like Monday, the seventeenth. I'm thinking we probably wouldn't have been there because it was probably a week that was below and a week that was above probably. So.
Right, okay.
Monday is the day, Monday is probably not the the day you want to. I I guess I would want to know from Steve too, we should probably, if we're if we're starting here either with the numbers that I have or substitute numbers. Is is Wednesday a reasonable day that you would do the two P M. Wednesday calculation to talk about the upcoming Monday? Or is that, I mean, how do you find the balance there?
But do you do a rolling seven or are you doing a straight seven on your average?
I think you do a rolling seven so you can see where it's at every day, but I think you have to pick what day of the week you make next week's decision, right?
Yeah, I I think, again, that's where I said earlier is I'm I'm looking at trend line on it because I think that it it may not be a specific day or a percent specific data point. Because I think if we if we can set that, because I think we want to have, we need enough time operationally to make a transition from one model to another. Parents need enough time to plan for it. So I think we're gonna.
If it's Monday for the next Monday or Tuesday, I mean, is a week enough? Is Tuesday for the?
I I don't know if that's enough because we were originally looking at those numbers and figuring that we were talking about a a two week plus window on there. So I don't know if a week window is enough. I've got to go back to the team and talk to them further about that.
It's just the I would, you know, the longer you go, obviously, the more time you have for planning. But if you say, you know, the older, the more you let the data age, if you say, you know, Friday for a for one, you know, for two Mondays subsequent, then it buys you more time, but there's more time for things to, you know, to go wrong with the data. And you would still, you would still know, but you would still know if two weeks ago you were low enough to count. So if if we were closer to the school year starting, say, Monday, again, not my suggestion. But if if Monday was the cutoff, we actually went up slightly today because we replaced zero positive test results last Monday with, again, probably because of Sunday reporting, with ten positive case results today. So we actually got a little bit worse. So no matter what, we would be sitting at next Monday being the first potential one week, you know, if that was the cutoff. So but yes, I mean, obvious obviously Friday is not the answer to the question because you don't want to, you know, see if you just squeak through on Friday to start Monday, but I would hope we could maybe look at look at Wednesday or or Tuesday as a as a cut date, but if you had to. And of course, if there's an emergency, and that's why I did put in the motion that there would be certain certain things if you're seeing that that positivity, test positivity has has spiked or the trend line has gotten bad, you could call a board meeting to look at it and you could have, if you had to, you could abandon ship if cases were skyrocketing. I think you'd need a
And I guess, I guess what I'd say is I, what I'm looking for more than the process, which is what you're talking about right now, is I I just want to know what the graphic looks like. Because then I think it's our job as an administrative team to come back and develop a process to implement. So rather than than you folks telling me, pull that data on Monday or Friday or Tuesday or Thursday and then make a decision by here, here, here. If you can tell me what the number should look like on the chart, then I will work with the administrative team to make that a process.
Yeah. Sure, I mean, if I'm, but people, I I think there is going to be an expectation from people who are, you know, many people are going to be watching this chart. So I think sooner rather than later, they'll want to know, is it Friday for the next Monday or is it Tuesday? And hopefully, we're sticking with it for a while. But I, and there are, I think, there are states that look at it on Saturday and could that could impact, do we open Monday, I think? I don't think that's a good idea. I I think it really leaves people on alert. So, okay, that's that's fair. I also would propose that this be we can, you could vote on the exact same metrics again, but I think as things change with cases, I would propose that this, whatever we pass would be a motion that expires on November seventeenth, which is a board meeting day, and we would have to vote again. We could vote in two minutes on the same thing, but we might, we'll know a lot more, we'll know a lot more from other other states, right? We'll know from Minnesota that used a very permissive metric if they were if they were making a choice to bring kids back into school much quicker when it was a lot higher than is proposed here. And they were fortunately not taking the consequences for that. It just seems to be something that probably should be subject to a reevaluation.
Go ahead, Christina.
Do we have to put a date on that, though? I mean, won't we be reevaluating this regularly? And at any moment, we could decide as a group to bring this forward, right? I mean, it seems like this is going to need to be reviewed before November.
I guess I wanted it to be forced to review to all the way to the point of voting on it again. It it's a it's a stronger statement to say that on November seventeenth, it has to, it's subject to board reapproval, then that's just a stronger commitment to it than just will be, of course, we'll be constantly evaluating. And if there's something that isn't, I think, yes, we'll know more, we'll know a lot by September twenty first by looking at what's different in Iowa, where you're not even allowed to go remote to unless you have fifteen percent positive tests, you can ask permission from the governor or Minnesota that's wide open or you know, Oregon, that's very restrictive. Hopefully, we won't learn from Oregon that despite the restrictive metric, it's spreading anyway. So what I'd love to learn is that Minnesota being very permissive, didn't have the spread and we could, but I think I think it's important to be committed to some point that we would be fully committed to re revote, which could be reconfirming if it's working.
Well, and I guess to your point too, you could put that in there to say at the very latest, that would be, we're putting a deadline. It could be sooner, but we're committing to the community that 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 will be.
Yep.
That that will be a part of our schedule.
I'd almost feel better if we put October.
I kind of was thinking the same thing, Eric.
Yeah, I love it. What's what's the October?
The the reasonable response to that is actually to say, set forth below and reviewed every month.
Yeah, I.
I I I don't know if I want to be voting on the metrics again every month. That could imply that that could look weird too. But I think I I think there should be a date where we have to, or we review them all the time, yep. But I think it should, it's a it's a little higher standard to say that there has to be board reapproval. But I I I'd change that to October.
Andrew?
Yeah.
Could you talk about what the reasons why you feel you don't want to do this every month? Can you say?
I want it on the agenda every month, no question. I just.
No, the the voting on it.
Yeah, I I mean, any any member could call for it to be voted on again, but I'm trying to strike a balance between some consistency saying we're, you know, we're going to be monitoring the science and there can be new scientific developments, but also not that every month we're picking metrics and maybe if, you know, two two board members get become a little more risk averse and two board members become more permissive. risk averse and two board members become more permissive from talking to, you know, people in other states or whatever, I guess I don't want to be all over the map with how often we'd vote, but three months or two months seems reasonable that we would revote then.
But can we make an a motion at a meeting to amend the?
I think it should be an actionable item at any time, but if you, again, there's, there's a difference in, I think it's too important of a thing to just, um, right, if no one ever makes a motion, uh, it could, it could still be the metrics we're using in in March, and I think it should, I think it's certain that there will be so much more information by October or November that it's it's worth a, it's worth a a forced reboot. But yes, you could have one sooner if if you need it, and I think it should be, I think it should be, I think anything related to COVID should be posted for possible action at every, at every board meeting.
All right. Um, I think we're just about ready to take a vote. Um, Noah, did you, oh, sorry. Um, let's go Brenda and then Noah. Brenda, you're on mute.
Based on our new board meeting schedule, our regular board meeting will be on November ninth. Right? If I'm reading the schedule.
Oh, we'd be on the second and the ninth, but we're, are we talking about October now instead? What is it? Is October the fifth and the nineteenth?
Seventeenth is a one, is a Tuesday rather in November.
Our regular, yeah, and our regular board meeting, because we switched, I don't know, Beth sent us an email this afternoon. Because we switched our regular board meeting, as I understand reading, reading this, is the, is the first, is the second Monday of the month.
In November nine.
Sessions are actually going to be the fourth.
If you put November ninth in there, Andrew, that would give you the November date.
I think he's asking for the October date.
There was some suggestion about October, though. Do you want to, do you want to do the October nineteenth one instead?
Actually, do the twelfth and the twenty sixth would be the standing ones.
So we're doing the second and the fourth and I, okay.
Our regular board meeting is flipped, too. Our regular board meetings are the second.
We can do that on the twenty sixth. This is, that's not a problem. Add that to the twenty sixth.
Except if we want to have it actionable, it'll have to be a.
We just schedule it right before the work session.
Okay, so October, is there a regular board meeting? I, I don't know, October fourteenth, now we're less than two months. I guess I like November, if November ninth is a regular board meeting, maybe I.
I'd be comfortable with.
Okay, Noah, let's make your comment, and then I think, uh, people are ready to vote. We'll go to Dawn.
Okay, thank you, Ms. President. Um, I think it's, yeah, I'm very happy to see a system and I I'm I'm sure, um, I'm sure my dad knows I criticize if I, um, like it, but no, no, I'm kidding. It's a good system. I think it, um, people, believe it or not, I I know it sounds like I'm just making this stuff up, but people actually have asked me about the metrics and when can it, what, what can I look at? What data can I just make my own spreadsheet and look at? And here we have something, so I definitely support the board moving with that. Parliamentarily, would you guys adopt a special rule unless someone knows something I don't, which is probably true, it is in most cases? Uh, amending something previously adopted is a two thirds vote unless you got, you have a differential for policies. But if you guys want to have a majority of the board to be able to amend this before November ninth, I don't know, maybe you would want to just consider that briefly, say you need four instead of five votes. I know, something to think about, just I'll throw that out there to the more legal side. But, um, from the student perspective, I've actually had multiple students asking about the metrics and I'm glad to see numbers there and data that can be looked at. Thank you, Ms. President.
Thanks, Noah.
Eric, can I just add a comment for, so the the board has a policy where they've adopted Robert's rules, so you would have to amend your policy for not going to follow Robert's rules.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, Dawn, uh, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I have my non-math brain wrapped around this. So the DHS is saying we would bring students for full onsite between at a moderate level, right, which is ten to fifty cases over a two week period. This would have us bringing in, um, our K five students to full onsite with sixty cases over a one week period, so a hundred and twenty cases over a two week period.
No, it would be sixty per week for two consecutive weeks.
But basically, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, but so, so the DHS is one hundred over the course of two weeks. This is sixty a week, so a hundred and twenty over the course of two weeks, right? I just want to make, I.
Yeah, yes, no, yes, it is. It is, this is, this is significantly more permissive than DHS, except DHS didn't really say bring kids in, right, see, DHS didn't say bring kids in when you're below a hundred for two weeks. DHS said our high color code is a hundred and our moderately high is fifty. It didn't say anything about when to bring kids in, so. But yes, it is stricter than, you know, Dean County starts to bring kids in at seventy-five, so even they are, or one, one fifty.
Yeah, so we're going from, so from a blended standpoint, based on, I'm looking at the present, the presentations they put out there and the DHS color coding.
Yep.
So we talk about, um, when we look at, I just want to make sure, I mean, that looks at a hundred, that looks at a hundred cases for two weeks and you're looking at a hundred cases for one week.
Correct.
So I'm, I'm just trying to make apples and apples, right? I'm I'm trying to make sure that I understand. So we're talking about as opposed to one hundred cases for two weeks, what you're saying is two hundred cases per two weeks. You're doubling what the DHS had, the DHS is.
It would be, uh, again, yes, except that the DHS, I mean, it's, it's a, it's an important point that the DHS did not, did not create those for schools and they didn't make a, right, Steve, or I'm, right, they didn't make a recommendation for schools at all. They, they don't, they declared what is high and what is moderately high and what is low, so.
So based on the DHS, moderately high is cases greater than fifty but less than a hundred per two weeks, per one hundred thousand people. So we would, we would be bringing our students in for full onsite while we would be moderate, ranked moderately high based on what DHS is recommended or given us is their baseline. Okay.
Correct, yeah, it is not, if if someone is, I I guess if if someone is a a fan of of DHS's high and moderately high cutoffs, you're probably not, you're probably not a supporter of of this. I mean, if if someone really feels, you know, if someone has looked into it and thinks the Oregon, uh, the very, um, high safety level Oregon metrics are the correct metrics, then my, my suggestions would not be for you if that's, if that's the case, and I know.
Blended onsite, we would be falling within DHS high.
We'd be, well, we'd be, I mean, yes, we would be.
Over high because DHS DHS high is one hundred per one hundred thousand people over a two week period.
Right.
So we would be bringing kids into the schools without any social distancing while we are still high based on DHS ranking.
Uh,
Yes.
Yes, yes, one twenty, because that would be one twenty, yep.
Okay.
Um. On onsite would be in the dark blue category on the slide that I showed. Am I correct, Andrew?
Well, the the, right, Dawn is just, I think Dawn was asking, would we, would we be bringing some kids back to fully onsite when the DHS might still have our county coded as high? And the answer is yes.
So if you go back and you, I, if you look at the chart that I showed in the dark blue on the top, so where it shows, I, I, one, two, three, four, and the K five, two, four, six.
Can you reshare that so we can look at what you're looking at?
I can't, I think, Andrew, you have to stop sharing. So I think, I think what.
You're getting ready to vote. I just need, because because what Andrew shared is on a weekly basis and what DHS shared is on a, is on a bi-weekly basis. So I need to move my head around exactly what I, what I'm looking at.
So Andrew, help me out here because I haven't calculated these numbers, but I'm presuming that what Dawn is saying is that we might be offsite only in these two top categories here. And as soon as we drop down into this area here, we're likely to move into a blended category this high. And then we'd be more in an on- onsite category when we got down even in here.
Yeah, we could be still, we could, we could still be, we could still be, we could still be in high because we could be one, if you had two weeks of exactly sixty, right, that would be one twenty. Elementary would come back full onsite and the state would still have the county coded as high. Um, and moderately high for high school because it would have to be two consecutive weeks of of forty for a total of eighty over two weeks. Um, yes, I mean, the states, yeah, the state metric is very hard to get even to medium as a county. Very, very hard.
So you you'd be, and I can't, I can't make the thought replicate like that, but you'd you'd be blended perhaps this quickly? And you, right?
You'd be, you'd be blended, you would be blended at, yeah, you you would, because you would start when you got down to, you know, if you had two weeks that were, you know, ninety-nine and ninety-nine or whatever, that would be double the state's high because the state is a hundred total in two weeks, so. Um, it wouldn't be five times the state's high like Minnesota, we wouldn't do, but yes, it would be higher than the state's high.
One thing you could do, let me just offer this as a, as an option, just because I know that our our local health service is working on this. You could vote to take that motion to health services for review uh, and have that back to the board, uh, for final adoption, so you could adopt it as a first draft. Uh, and we can take it to Brown County Health for review based on the work they're doing and bring it back, um, for a, as a second draft for, uh, approval.
Yeah, I'd, I'd personally, Steve, I'd, I'd feel a lot better with that. I mean, the the weight of this all of a sudden, as we're getting prepared to vote, feels very significant and and Dawn's point of, you know, again, I I I'm comfortable with being somewhere in the middle, but I don't know if this is in the middle. I mean, it is compared to Minnesota and Oregon, but, um, I'd love for someone else to react to that, so I I'd be comfortable with something like that. Laura, go ahead and round up.
Um, I, I, I like Steve's idea about having this reviewed. I'm, um, I think, I think we're better off starting conservative and adjusting if needed, and honestly, why? I, I mean, I'm not comfortable with having one board member be the driver of of all this data. And I, data that I am not familiar with and and all of that, I mean, I I appreciate all that work. Clearly, there's a lot of it that's gone into it. But, um, I, I, I'm, I would feel more comfortable with a more team approach here and also, um, I feel like Steve and his team, I'm going to say it again, have been working on this a long time. And I am much, much more comfortable, um, taking the recommendation of DHS on this. And.
But there isn't one. There isn't one.
And seeing how we get through September um, and see what happens in the communities around us. There's just so many hypotheticals here that I just cannot, I, I, I'm not comfortable with, um, with this, so I I would be a no.
Okay, go ahead, Rhonda.
So who at, um, if this gets sent to to the county is what you're asking, correct?
That was Steve's suggestion, yes.
Yes. Who, who ultimately is actually going to vet this at the county level? Who are all the parties involved?
Yeah, I I don't know who all of them are. I know I've been working directly with Ted Shove over there.
Okay, because I, because I think that matters obviously a bit as well. Um, can you also answer, are there any other school districts who have created any sort of metric other than what's being preferred or presented from DHS?
Now, we're out in front of this a little bit right now. I am speaking with colleagues both here in Brown County and then also through the Big Five and through WASDA. Uh, there are groups that are working on it. Obviously, the Dane County groups quit working on it because their DHS gave them that, uh, countywide plan. They were probably the ones that were actually furthest ahead before they quit working, so right now, uh, I have not found any others in Wisconsin that have a plan out yet. They're all in progress right now.
So, um, how are these other school districts determining when they transition? What are they using?
They've used dates so far. We're going to review by, and then fill in the blank, we're going to review by November first, we're going to review by the end of the trimester, we're going to review by, uh, um, some, some, uh, date somewhere in the future, so they picked a date to review it again, but they haven't established a formula they'll use at that review.
So I would have, I would, um, I'd like to see support for this, and I think the only route that I can see would be to take this to the, to the county level.
Yeah, so i- if somebody were to make a motion to say, take Andrew's plan and and send it to the, uh, to the county health department as a draft for their reaction, then we could have another meeting. Ted Shove could come to the meeting and say, hey, here's my thoughts. Uh, he's certainly more qualified than most of us, and, uh, then we could adopt something. I mean, and we're, we're all virtual until we adopt that plan.
Is there a possibility, though, Eric, that, I mean, they haven't really presented anything yet? So is it possible that they wouldn't be willing to actually attach themselves to one specific school district's metrics? And what do we do if that happens?
And I should have clarified, I'm talking about Brown County Health and not DHS because DHS.
Yes, and I.
Um, but Brown, Brown County Health is, has said that they are working on this. They're just, uh, not, they were, and I get it, they were waiting. DHS told us all that they were going to come forth with something, so the county health department stopped working on it. Why would you work on it if DHS is going to give you something? So then when DHS punted on it, they brought all their stuff back up, they started working on it again, um, and they've given us some level of confidence that within the next two weeks, they're going to have their plan done. Um, and so I think if we took our plan to them, they could line it up with what they're working on and tell us, are we in line? Are we more aggressive? Are we less aggressive? And then at least we would have some feedback on that.
I like that. Andrew?
Okay, but wouldn't they, I guess what what I don't want to see is us, is the school year starting and we have no, we have no metrics in place because the county didn't yet act. I, I would presume if the county acts and they act in favor of something stricter, it would probably be binding on us. And we'd be obliga-, right? I mean, I think they have that authority.
They do, they do, but whether they use it or not is another question.
Right, but like Dane County, if if a, if a school district in Dane County had used what I laid out there, it would have been overruled by the county's health department in favor of a stricter metric.
That's correct.
Um, if, uh, I would assume, uh, probably, uh, health department wouldn't care if a school district chose a stricter metric, that that would probably be okay. So I would think a a big part of why I'd like to get something on on paper today is because this is our last shot to have, to have metrics in play, and if, uh, if, uh, the county health department sees fit to impose a stricter metric on us and everyone in the county, then they're free to, they're free to do that, but I, I would at least like people to have something. But I, I would at least like people to have something to, something to look at. And I'm not, I'm not that convinced that the county is inclined to make a, a ruling. Because there's plenty of time that that could have happened. I understand maybe they were waiting for DHS to make the ruling that DHS didn't make. And, um. Yeah, I can, I mean, it's, yeah, it's an attempt to find, it's an attempt to find some middle ground. If you look at the days since, if you look at the days since, uh, April twelfth hypothetically. This plan would have had fifty-nine days that we would have been completely offsite. Uh, Dane County would have had eighty-four. Minnesota would have had none. Uh, Oregon would have had all of them. Washington and California, almost all. Kansas, um. Kansas, uh, depending on the county, between fifteen and thirty-seven days of all offsite. And you might think, okay, well, Kansas, you know, deep, uh, deep red state maybe wouldn't have much offsite, but then Connecticut also would have had only seventeen days offsite, so.
Eric, can we focus on, on Green Bay?
So I, I, I just feel like we're starting to spin our wheels a little bit. Um, so I want to try to get us back on track and, and at least, uh, you know, put a plan going forward, so.
Eric, can we just add something here? Just one thing. So even if Brown County does offer some actual guidance on this, isn't that what we've been hoping for? Isn't that what we've been waiting for, for health experts to take, give us some solid guidance that has been, um, produced by experts?
Yes.
That is what, I, I hope they do because honestly, they have got the manpower and the expertise to, to do that. I wish they'd done it sooner, but we don't know yet if that's going to actually happen. So let's, let's submit the plan, see what they get some feedback. That's where I would like to see this going.
Christina, do you want to add on to that?
Thanks, Laura. I mean, I think that's exactly the issue. They actually don't have the manpower. They've been underfunded for some time. And that's why we've seen them, you know, from my understanding, not be able to really get something to us sooner. Um, which of course, all the other issues that we know they're facing. So I agree absolutely, like, and what I was going to actually ask too to Steve, and this is secondary, is, you know, who calculated Dane County's numbers? Because here we are basically pulling at straws, trying to figure out what we're going to do. So we have something here, let's send it to them. I agree with you. Let's see what they say. And, you know, we know we're starting virtually. We know that's a go. And that at least gives us something that we can move forward tonight. So, and Steve, to your, to the question, do you know who put their numbers together?
Uh, I, it's my understanding, they took their numbers right from the state database.
Okay, so they just use.
Well, most of us right now are.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
I agree with you, but that's good, good.
Go ahead, Rhonda.
So I have a, I just thought a consideration for Andrew to think about. Um, I, I feel very good about what you've created. I feel very good about the, the common sense around it. Um, I think it's important that we have buy-in to this more than anything. Um, and I, I don't believe we will have it in the way that we need to if the county health department isn't able to take a look at it and give us feedback. I just don't believe that. I'd like to think that's the case, but I really don't believe that's the case. And I wonder what you think about the importance of having buy-in from the, from our families, from our staff, from our community, knowing. Knowing what everything looks like at this time.
So I think if the county says we're not strict enough, they're going to override us anyways. And, you know, I think this, I think we, we will go an indefinite amount of time without any metrics at all. If we just submit this as a question to the, the county.
Do you see this as submitting it to a question or do you see them? I, I guess I don't see that as a question. I see it as, can you give us feedback on what we've presented to you? I don't see it even being a yes, no. I see, I'm hoping that they'll give. I mean, maybe we'll actually help them craft what they're doing. I don't know. I feel like there's, there was an opportunity to have. Some discussion around, like, the varying degrees of, like, the permissive and the, you know, really aggressive.
So two weeks, so, so, all right, so two weeks from now, school has started, the county hasn't acted. Then we still have, we still have no return metrics. And our answer to what should we be looking at for when we can start returning is I don't know because the.
Go ahead, sorry.
So I'm not, I'm not interested in spending all this time and having something that, that doesn't count and is submitted for a question that may never be answered.
Well, maybe we actually give some sort of a, a shelf life of this return.
I think it has to be answered. We have to have, we have to have a return to learn plan. Yeah, we can't not have a return to learn plan. So if, if we can't get the county to weigh in on this. Uh, which I'm inclined to think that they are based on the work they're doing right now, but if for some reason we couldn't get the county to weigh in on this. Nothing whatsoever prevents us from coming back, uh, with this as a second reading, moving forward with this either as written or with any adjusted metrics that you determine between now and then. There's nothing that stops us from doing that.
So are you proposing, Steve, that we would pass, we would be passing this as a, in like a first reading sense and would take a. So we would have passed something, but it would still be pending the county's input and, and a scheduled second vote?
Yeah, we can put the second vote on September ninth. So if you think about that, we're, uh, September ninth, no, it's on the ninth. Yeah.
I mean, if it's a first, you know, if it's a first vote and then getting new information and then a, a second vote. But I, I, I really didn't want to start this, the school year without something. Although certainly if the county were to override us with something, uh, stricter, then, then okay, then they can, they can override us. If, if doing it in a, I mean, I would prefer doing it as a first reading pending a September ninth second reading as opposed to passing it as just a suggestion to the county. That's less bad, I guess, but I really thought we would maybe be the place that had a plan in place. When school started, so people could start looking at, are we making progress towards getting back? Uh, I also, in talking to people, it seemed that there was some pretty, pretty solid thought that the positivity, you know, the. If, if we got, uh, all positive, positive test percentage thing back from the county that didn't look at how many people actually have it. And something that could close schools because you had only a hundred tests in a week. That would be, yeah. So I don't know. I guess if, if we're going to do it as a first or second, if we're going to do it as a first and second reading. With a scheduled second reading on September ninth, and that's the only way it'll pass, I guess I'll live with it. But, um, if it were to be passed as a suggestion only, then I'm not even interested.
Andrew, can I just say that I really truly feel that unless you have, unless there's an attempt from the county to take a look at this, I don't think it's going to pass. Do you?
I don't know. I mean, I, I'm concerned about what happens if the county doesn't act. I think there's a reason that, and maybe I'm, maybe I'm wrong about the, the county here, but right, Dane County acted a long time ago with metrics, right? Other counties and other states' health departments a- acted and set rules for, for schools. And states set them or counties set them. Uh, I wouldn't be, you know, I, there's a reason I didn't do this in July either. Because, yeah, I thought there'd be some, some state, some rules or guidance coming. And now, now we're going to start the, um, now we're going to start the year without, um, without a rule.
But I'd just jump in just for a minute, Andrew, and say you're absolutely right in the sense that there's a great deal of frustration that we don't have more guidance. Whether it's from the federal level, the state level, or even our local county level. It's frustrating to start the school year without being able to tell parents that these are the gating criteria and this is when we want to come back. And that's one of the reasons that we're here tonight is we were hoping that we'd been promised that the DHS was going to give us those gating criteria. So it'd simply be a matter of us bringing them forward, sharing them with you, you vote on them and away we go. Uh, that's why I put the draft presentation together last time because I was privy to that draft DHS document. And so it was an opportunity for us to set the stage and start the conversation. For whatever reason, and I won't get on a political soapbox here, they dropped the ball and they passed on it. And they, they decided not to, to take a stand and, and, uh, give us guidance as school districts. So that left us hanging. Unfortunately, I think it also did the same thing to the counties. I think the counties were in the same position that we were, hoping that they were going to get this direction from the state. They'd be simply able to adopt it, pass it on to their counties, um, you know, and, and we would all be working on the, uh, the same program. Whether you were in La Crosse or Green Bay or Eau Claire or Penosha, we'd all be on the same page. We don't have that. And so I think now what you're seeing is counties are scrambling. To be honest with you, and my guess is that Dane County may have more cynics and pessimists on their team than we do. And so they may have looked at the state legislature or maybe they're closer to it and they thought they're not going to get the bu-, the job done. And so they were working in the background on their own plan and they were ready to go when the state, uh, punted on it. Our county had a little bit more faith in the DHS and didn't. Um, but like I said, at least from, from some of the recent correspondence that I've seen, I really do feel like they've stepped it up and they're ready to take some action on this. Because they know that we are struggling when you have districts right next door to each other with these diametrically opposed plans. And so I do think our Department of Public Health is going to provide us a resource. Um, frustrating that it's not before the beginning of the school year, absolutely one hundred percent. I, I could not be closer, more closely aligned to you with that because parents want some ability to figure out where is the end of the tunnel. Um, and I wish we could give that to them, but at the same point in time, I, I do think we're in a position now where absent that data and absent those metrics from the state. We're trying to create this on our own and, and as, as good as you are and as good as our team is at, at data and numbers. You know, we're not epidemiologists and we're not public health experts. Um, and I think if, if our county is moving in that direction, I do think we owe it to them and the, the expertise they have in this arena. To give us feedback on what we're looking at and tell us, are we in the horseshoe pit? Go ahead. Looks fine to me. It might not be exactly what we're coming up with, but you're close enough. Or you're way outside the pit and whatever you come up with isn't going to look like what we do, in which case then we can come back and reconsider. So as frustrated as I am, which sounds like it's exactly as frustrated as you are, I really think that, that, uh, we owe it to, to the public health professionals to give us the feedback and we expect that they do.
Andrew, can I also ask you to consider the fact that now we are a public school body taking metrics? Sounds like we're one of the first districts in the area to do that and give it to the county. And it may be reported in the media that we're doing that. Um, they're aware of it. It's, it's very, it's, it'll be out there. Um, I think when you talk about a timeline and something not returning, I think it's more unlikely that that will be the case. Because there's now more of a microscope on what we're doing and we're bringing them into the discussion and, and we're relying on their feedback. And to some degree, that's, you know, that they've got a little, I would imagine a little bit of pressure there. So I, I'm not really worried that they won't give us some timely feedback because of all of that.
All right, I made an update to the motion. If I can share my screen, I'll, I'll move a motion that includes a requirement of a second reading. On September ninth for, for final confirmation and then would still be subject to reapproval on November ninth.
And I, I'm getting my dates wrong, Andrew, just so you know, and I apologize for that because the ninth turns out to be a Wednesday. It's the fourteenth.
Fourteenth, that's two, that could have been a, that could have been the first week that.
But again, I'm going to tell you that, you know, we're, we're going to need time to prep for this. We can't turn on a dime like that. So, uh, I, I, I think, uh, I, I think it gives us that opportunity to make sure that we've got that transition plan built into.
Okay, so September fourteenth is a regular board meeting. And November ninth is a regular board meeting. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, um, I'll make a motion. I move that the Board of Education approves the following instructional model gating criteria for grades pre-K through fifth grade. For transition between the various instructional models as set forth below. Subject to a second reading on September fourteenth, twenty twenty for final confirmation and subject to reapproval by the board. On November ninth, uh, with offsite to blended, less than a hundred per hundred K population two consecutive weeks. Blended to offsite, greater than one hundred per hundred K two consecutive weeks. Uh, blended to onsite, less than sixty per hundred K two consecutive weeks. Onsite to blended, greater than sixty per hundred K population per week two consecutive weeks. And that the Board of Education approves the following instructional model gating criteria for grade sixth, grade through fourteenth grade. For transition between the various instructional models as set forth below. Subject to a second reading on September fourteenth, twenty twenty for final confirmation and subject to reapproval by the board on November ninth. Um, offsite to blended, less than eighty per hundred K population per week two consecutive weeks. Blended to offsite, greater than eighty per hundred K population per week two consecutive weeks. Blended to onsite, less than or equal to forty per hundred K population per week two consecutive weeks. Onsite to blended, greater than forty per hundred K population per week two consecutive weeks. Furthermore, a significant positive trajectory rate between the two most recent weeks or a one week positive test rate over fifteen percent in Brown County. Will trigger an emergency board meeting to determine if an exception is necessary.
Again.
No, I saw your hand up. Sorry, I didn't get a chance to call on you if you have a quick comment.
Yeah, I, okay, so thank you, Mr. President. What, I, I don't need an essay. I'm just asking what, what is being sought after? Like, what are, what's the hope that county health will give to us that a thousand other health departments haven't already given? Like, are they going to give us something new or is it just going to be a different range of numbers?
No, I think that the overall hope is that, and this is from conversations that I've had with board members, is that we want medical professionals. We want people who have expertise in these areas to make these decisions for, decisions for us or at least weigh into those decisions. And, uh, we, you know, appreciate, uh, the work that Andrew has put into this. But before anyone feels comfortable, that we would like someone to at least react to it. And if, if, if we can get that reaction by September fourteenth, then we would, people would feel more comfortable and supporting.
So, okay, so you, this specific, it's that no, no one has looked at, no health expert anywhere has looked at these specific numbers and said, here's the situation. Okay, that makes sense to me. I, I get it. I guess I, I don't think from the student perspective, I, I'm glad that there's a, a second reading in there. I think that's important. It is late. I think there's not going to be a lot of happiness about it, but at least there's something. I guess my worry is that if, I mean, health experts put out the Minnesota plan too. So experts, you can't just say, do, this is what experts believe, this is what science says, and this is what politicians say. It's not that. It's a spectrum. And I think that somewhere in the middle is good. I hope you guys keep with it. I hope the county just says, here's, here's our feedback. This makes sense to us. And I hope we get an actual metric at some point. That'd be really nice because people at this current, like I've said, until a metric is approved with automatic. Uh, tiered levels, it's indefinite. If it's just waiting for the board to have the, the fourth vote, that's indefinite. That is no promise to me. So I hope that this, this goes for something at some point and eventually it gets teeth in it. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, Beth, if you could take the vote.
And Eric, can I just ask a quick question? We're going to get asked for this motion. So Andrew, could you please send all of this to Beth tonight so that, um, when the media asks for this, that we have this for, and Beth can get it to Lori. We'll also need to reproduce this and agenda manager.
Uh, yes, of course.
Thank you. Okay, sorry, Eric, go ahead.
Nope. All right, Beth, ready to take a vote.
Sidney House?
Yes, aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
I.
Becker?
I.
McCoy?
I.
Brandon Hoover?
I. All right, motion passed seven zero. Uh, that takes us to the consent agenda items. If I could have someone make a motion.
I did have one, one thing while we were posted for the the school reopening topic. We are posted for school reopening, right?
Yep.
Um, yeah, I am, as we get. I I'm I'm concerned, I I guess I remain. I remain concerned, and we're not posted for action on this. I'm not asking for action on this, but I. I, there is a lot of public perception that. Um, blended and virtual is going to be people. Staring at a computer for seven and a half hours a day, and if if it's not that, and I believe it's not that, and I've I had conversations about it. I hope we have some, and and maybe maybe the answer is people will see on September first that it's not that, and they'll just need to see how different it is from how it was. Previously, and then and then, okay, but that perception is still out there. And I want people to be aware of it, and I also think. That. I want to make sure that as we look to what I I would hope to be. Of. Before too long in the year that we'll be going to blend it. I'm concerned that not enough. Attention is being placed on the possibility of of outdoor classrooms, at least on. Good weather days that could allow kids to be in a much less restrictive setting than. The socially distanced classrooms. I just don't want those to be lost off the radar.
I I'm sorry, I I, but we are posted only for gating criteria for the twenty twenty-one school year, so I I don't think we're posted for this, Andrew. I think. Um, you could talk to Christina and Eric, and we can have it as a future agenda item, but we are strictly posted for gating criteria. And then the resignations, employment, and retirement of staff.
Mm-hmm, okay.
All right, uh, but your point's taken, Andrew. And we'll make sure that that's on the next agenda. All right, um, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All right, Beth?
Warren?
I.
Becker?
I.
McCoy?
I.
Smith?
I.
Sidney Powell?
I.
Shelton?
I.
Brandon Hoover?
I. Passed seven zero, and a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Beth?
Shelton?
I.
Smith?
I.
Warren?
I.
Brandon Hoover?
I.
Sidney Powell?
I.
McCoy?
I.
Becker?
I.
All right, passed seven zero, and that ends our special board meeting. Thanks for your time, everyone.
Thanks, everybody.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www dot G B A P S dot org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling nine two zero. Four four eight two zero two five, or by email at communications at G B A P S dot org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.